Good evening and welcome to the Town of Poughkeepsie zoning Board of Appeals. It's December ninth, two thousand twenty-four. If you'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Christine?
Here.
Art?
I'd be here.
Phyllis?
Here.
Tony G?
I'm here.
Here.
Tony S?
Here.
Okay, we have one missing member. So Linda, our alternate, will be a voting member tonight. For any of you unfamiliar with the proceedings here before the zoning Board of Appeals, there's an agenda, which is available on the website. There may be a copy here. Each item will be taken in order that appears on the agenda. The applicant will come forward and be sworn and describe their application. There may be some questions from the board, and then the public is welcome to comment on any of the applications. When the record's closed, we'll move to the next item. When all items are finished, there'll be a time for deliberation. At that time, no further evidence is taken, and we'll make a decision. You can either wait till the end of the meeting or call the zoning administrator in the morning. With that, we have item number one. That's five sixty-six Vassar Road. Is there someone for that?
Yes, hi.
Okay, just state your name.
Jennifer Sova.
Okay, and I think you're still under oath from last time?
Yes.
Okay, so what's new?
So we drove around and looked at the fences that were approved, and we had sent over a couple. I saw one that was a six-foot solid all running property, but I assume that's the one that's not something that we'd be able to do. So we did see a semi-private style fencing, which had a diagonal slot, seven-eighths of an inch wide. That was one option that we did like, that we saw on the intersections Spackenkill and Farm Room. And I was hoping that we could have that at a five foot, just for the safety as well.
So are you on a phone or on your laptop?
I'm on my laptop.
Are you able, apparently Sonia was unable to download what you submitted to her? Are you able to share that with us?
Okay, don't mind how I look. So, I don't know, that might be too blurry for you guys to see.
Yeah, that's, so when you submitted it, is there a way for you to open that up and share your screen on Zoom?
No, because my husband submitted, and he is actually, he had an emergency call to work, so he'd be unable to do that at present.
Okay.
In addition, if that wasn't acceptable, I would also be willing to do a standard white picket with a two-inch spacing, if that was able to be done at five foot. Though we can't get the privacy, we would at least have the safety. Hello?
Okay, so it'd be five foot tall with two-inch spaces between the pickets?
Yes.
And how wide would the pickets be?
Um, well, I think that they said that the standard picket size, hold on, I have it here. Um, standard spacing is two inches. The section comes with a seven-eighths of an inch pointed picket, seven-eighths of an inch by three inches.
Okay, three inches wide.
Mm-hmm.
And what's the material it's made of?
Uh, that's the vinyl.
Okay, and what was your other alternate?
That, so the original one, it is a, it's, they describe it as overlapping vertical design. It's for semi-privacy, and that's seven-eighths of an inch by six inch pickets. So like the, they're a diagonal, opposed to just a wide picket.
Okay. And again, that's vinyl?
Yes.
Well, before we do anything, Tony, ask, have any questions?
Well, I can't really visualize it, but maybe one of you guys can.
Okay. Is that the feeling of everybody, you need to see it?
I just have, well, if I could ask the location of the one, Jennifer, could you repeat the location of the fence that you saw that you referenced at the beginning of your statement?
It was right by Spackenkill High School.
At the corner of Spackenkill and?
Farm.
Old Farms, okay.
Old Farm, that was it, yeah.
Okay, and were you talking about it looking exactly like that fence?
Uh, well, that was, that was a white vinyl with a diagonal slot, so I did like the appearance of that. I thought that was visually pleasing.
Okay, and the height you're looking for at that one is six foot as well, is that?
Well, I was in the impression that that was off the table, so I'm willing to go to five feet.
Five feet, okay. Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
All right, so there was suggested if you could take a picture of what you were trying to show us, and if you email that to Sonia.
Okay.
We might be able to do something with it.
Okay, I'll see if I can do that right now.
Okay. All right, does anyone else have any questions?
Oh, yes, I do.
So Jennifer, the other fence, the picket fence with the two-inch spacing, you're looking at that one being five foot tall?
Yes.
Five feet tall, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell me, when we drove by the other day, there were some stakes with like pink flags or tape on the top. Is that where the fence is gonna be, that far back from the road?
Yes, yep.
So was that about twenty feet back?
Yeah, that's where our property line starts, past the easement.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't see anyone in the audience, and I don't see anyone on Zoom, and I'm sorry to do that to you, but I think we really need to see what you're describing, and I don't think there's a rush right now.
I mean, at this point, it wouldn't be good done until next year anyway, so that's fine.
Right, right, okay. So I'm just gonna make a motion to adjourn it to next month, and then submit that, and also you may want to submit some additional alternatives that you might be willing to consider.
Okay.
All right, so I move to adjourn this to January?
January thirteenth?
Thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, thanks very much.
All right, thanks, have a happy holiday.
Okay.
You too, thank you.
Item two has been adjourned. Item three is nine Shelley Road. Could you state your name?
Sorry, yeah, I was signing in. Name is Michael Berta, Berta Architecture and Planning.
Mr. Berta, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete, to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
All right, so what we have is an existing raised ranch, built a number of years ago, and they're looking to do several additions, different types of renovations. They're looking to put a two-car garage attached to the house, and then convert the existing garage space into living space. The reason for that is their mother's coming to live with them, and they would need additional, additional space for them to feel like she has her own space. We are showing a wet bar in there, but there will be no, we're not looking for an apartment. So, so that's addition A. We're looking also to do a master bedroom addition, and extend out the existing master bedroom, as well as renovate the existing three-season room into a four-season room. So the garage is done, so it says a twenty-three by twenty-three inside space, and then there's a staircase that goes from the garage up to the upper level.
And the width, the outside width of the garage?
Total, total width on the garage is twenty-seven feet.
Twenty-seven-ten?
Twenty-seven feet, twenty-seven-zero. We tried to keep it as small as possible, given for two cars.
Okay. And is the applicant gonna appear also, or?
I believe they're on Zoom. I spoke to her yesterday, they were gonna be on Zoom today.
Are the Buckleys on?
Yes, we are.
Oh, okay. Do you wanna have any comments on the application?
No, we do not.
Okay, so, all right. And as I understand, the garage will be facing Shelley Road, the garage doors?
Correct.
And you're familiar with the area enough to describe the neighbor, the neighbor's property?
Um, they're all pretty much all raised ranches in the neighborhood. There are a couple of houses around the corner that have done additions, that have garages facing the front, and there's a couple of them that have gone to look crazy on the additions. The neighbors on either side of them are not, have not done anything.
Do you know the distance between the proposed edge of the garage and the neighbor's building?
It's about fourteen feet.
And I noticed that there's a fence that goes along the property line in the back of, the back of the property, and this is, there's, how much, like five or six feet?
That's, that's in about a foot off the property line.
Okay.
Roughly.
Okay, those are the questions I have. Tony, ask.
I don't have any questions.
All right, Linda?
I don't have any questions.
Tony G?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
All right.
Do we meet the criteria for how much space you're putting in the apartment?
No apartment.
No, no apartment, sir.
Are we doing the existing garage?
It's just, it's just additional living space for you, with their mother coming in to live with them. They just need a little bit of more room, you know, so they're, once she feels like she has her own space, and she's not always with them.
Thank you.
Christine?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see one, any in the audience, and I don't see anyone on Zoom. So I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And again, you can wait till the end of the evening, or call me.
I'll just have to call tomorrow. Thank you so much, appreciate you, Tom.
Next is item number four, three Edgewater. All right, if you'd state your names.
Sean Merrill.
Elizabeth Merrill. Mr. and Mrs. Merrill, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete, to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
So we're looking to do two things. We're looking to add a garage, actually take the existing garage down and rebuild a new garage in its place, and then we're also looking to put a covered porch, remove the existing unilock front steps, and utilize a covered porch in that space as well.
Okay, and the purpose of redoing the porch?
The existing stairs are not in good shape.
Okay, and I'm sorry, you're gonna match the front of the, of the building? You're gonna have an extension?
We're going to, we're gonna redo the side, everything outside of the house, the whole facade of the house is all gonna be redone.
Okay. And you have a one-car garage now?
A small one-car garage, yes.
And so you're gonna expand that and then lengthen it?
Expand it and lengthen it, and it's, and it's still gonna be a one-car garage, but it'll be a one-car garage where we can actually do some work in it and not have to remove everything, and not have to do any work in it, so it'll just be a larger one-car garage.
And it's fair to say that this is the only place for a garage on your property, right?
That's correct. Either side, we'd need a variance to put a garage on, and it is the only place to put a garage on the property.
Okay, I don't have any more questions. Tony?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Sorry.
No questions.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
All right.
No questions.
Christine?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't, I don't see any, and I don't see any on Zoom, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And you can stay, or find out tomorrow. Or you just call the zoning administrator? That brings us to item number five, two twelve Violet Avenue. Is there anyone here for that application?
No, the only people on the Zoom, aside from Lisa, is the folks that we heard from on the first one.
All right, I'll call that again. Item six, one fifty-eight Manchester Road. Why don't you state your name?
Justin, how you doing today?
Justin?
Justin, yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete, to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
All right, so there was a pre-existing deck prior to me rebuilding it, and I guess with new code, it needs to be twenty feet away, but the house was built in nineteen twenty, it was a kit house. Approximately, I need a nine-and-a-half foot variance for the deck that's pre, that's there.
Okay, when's the last time the house was occupied?
To my knowledge, last year. I know there's some health things going on with the husband, and the wife is taking over everything right now.
Okay, and I'm sorry, you're the owner, or you're just doing the?
No, I'm just the contractor.
All right. All right, and there's a stop work order now? Is that just on the deck, or?
Just on the deck, yeah, just on the deck.
Okay, all right. And is it about the same size as the prior deck?
It's exactly the same size, yes.
Okay, those are the questions I have. Tony, Tony asks.
No questions.
No questions.
Tony G?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
All right.
If there's no infringement on the property line, do you say it's right?
So?
Same spot it was?
Same spot as it was, yes, from edge to edge on the house.
No questions. Christine?
No questions.
All right, anyone who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone. So I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. So, two twelve Violet Avenue.
Thought there was one additional person on before, but?
I'm going to call them.
You're gonna call them?
Yeah.
Just the one we said that could take a little time? Okay.
Yeah, so she may not be here until like six thirty.
Oh, really?
Who, this person? Two one two Violet? Yes.
So I think we can, we can vote on the other business, right? You said that's no problem, right? Okay, so I move that we accept the request of the town planning board to be lead agency on one sixty Soul Point Turnpike. This is a rezoning of the RM Residential Multifamily District by the Town Board and Planning Board's second approval for an office building to multifamily residential use.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And then I'd also move to accept the planning board's request that they be lead agency on fifty-one Vassar Road. Yeah, for redevelopment of a parcel, including construction of a building for retail use. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. No, that's not a question.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Cameron? Would it be possible to request that they look at it, maybe a more brown rather than a white on it? I like the fence, but I don't like the color. That white is, but ugly, shiny classic stuff.
Well, these, for me, I can't really see the spacing or anything from these views. One, it has a three, a three oh five on the top left corner, that looks like it's solid. And I guess the one that's three oh six on the, on the left side has spacing, but it's, I'd like to actually see what it looks like from the side. So, yeah, so I don't know actually where these came from. She showed a, I mean, she showed a, it would look like a pamphlet of something, so this is quite clear we're not a copy of that. When you, when you reach out to them, have them make sure they submit something that we can actually consider.
Yeah, make sure they submit something.
And, you know, we'll try and get them to identify exactly what these are. All right, I think we can vote on the ones, on the hearings that we have closed, right? Right, Lisa?
Sure.
So, let's see. Buckley is still here, right?
No.
Okay, so that's nine Shelley Road. So this is an application to have a garage addition closer to the side yard, lot line. I point out that the neighbor's house, that's just adjacent to that, there's no windows on that side, it didn't seem to me that this would impact in any way. And although we, I think the plans show that it's just, just a garage, it's not, doesn't go the second story to the rest of the house, and it's inside, there's a fence that goes all the way to, on the property line in the back, and this is farther away from the property line than that one, so I personally, I think this does not have much of an impact on anything, and so I would recommend that we approve it. Does anybody have any concerns about it? Okay, then let me make these findings. Whether an undesirable change would produce in the character of the neighborhood, or document nearby properties, it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood. There are others similarly situated dwellings with attached garages on the side, and as I pointed out, I don't think it's gonna have any impact on the neighbor, simply that there's no windows on that side of the neighbor's side, so it's not gonna be any visual impact on that side. And whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance, based upon their, where the, where the building is located on the, on the property, there's no, there's no way to do anything else other than come out this far into the driveway. And whether it's substantial, mathematically, it is substantial, however, I think the impact is, the visual impact and physical impact is kind of minimal. And whether it will have an adverse effect on the impact, or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence that will have any physical or environmental impact, and although this is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application. And I will submit those as my findings. Christine, am I making a motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant,
This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So move.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. We can do, three Edgewater. So this is an application to expand the garage and, and redo the, really the face, uh, and the rest of the building. But important to this one, only the face of the building. My recollection of, of the property is that there's a, there's a fence, there's a fence between the neighbor's property. There's a large tree, and the neighbor's house is, is pretty far away. So the garage is there already, already encroaching in the side lot line. This increases it somewhat, but I don't think there's much of an impact. Does anybody else have any concerns? Then I'd offer these findings. It's similar in character with other neighboring properties and consistent with the neighborhood. And, um, there should be no detriment based upon the screening from the existing fence and other, uh, trees and other vegetation, and the distance of the neighbor's house as far away. And, um, based upon the size of the, of the lot and the position of the home, this is the, an area variance is the only way to obtain, um, the physical and architectural desires of the applicant. And, uh, whether the requested area variance is substantial, it's mathematically, but based upon, uh, the neighboring property, um, the effect is minimal. And there's no evidence of any physical or, um, environmental impact on the neighborhood or the district. And while this was self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application. And I would offer those findings. Art, do you mind making the motion?
I move the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item three. This decision is based?
Four, it's item four, but?
Four, that's close.
Thank you.
Four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. Approving this variance, the board adopts the funding set forth by the chair. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That comes to item number six, one fifty-eight Manchester Road. This is, he's redoing a deck, um, the deck is just in line with the property, I'm sorry, just in line with the, the house. Doesn't extend into the side lot line any further than, um, than the house. And it appears that the prior deck had been there for quite some time. So, um, if any, does anyone have any concerns about this one? Then let me offer this. The, um, there won't be any change in the character of the neighborhood, similar with other properties in the neighborhood. And in fact, this is just a replacement deck for one that appears to have been there for quite some time. And, um, based upon the sighting of the house on the property, it's impossible to, to do, to get the deck there without, without an area variance. Mathematically, it could be substantial, and because it encroaches no further in the side lot line than the, um, primary dwelling, I think that the, um, it's, it's a minimal, has a minimal impact. And there's no evidence of any physical or environmental, uh, impact. And while this was self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application. And I would offer those findings. Phyllis, do I make a motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for the area variance set forth in item number?
Six.
Six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearings, and the result of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Are you here for, um, two twelve Violet Avenue? Come on up. Right there. If you'd state your name, you can sit, have a seat.
Mr. Daniel, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
Well, they want to put a garage attached to the house.
Okay, here the builder?
There, there. I've just helped them do a lot of big commercial work. So they want to put a garage attached to the house with a door going through. I mean, you got the plans, it'll be two-story, they want to do a dwelling. And the offset's a little bit off, as, uh, I think it's twenty, thirty foot in the back, and it's twenty foot. And on the side, it's twenty foot, and one point it goes at an angle, sixteen foot. And in the back, it's ten foot on the side.
So the building, the main building is kind of, it's an odd-shaped line, right?
Yeah, it's a little, that's, yeah, it's an angle.
Okay, and they don't have a garage now, right?
No.
And there's really no other place to put the, is, is it, is there?
What's that?
Is there any other place to put the garage?
No, that's the only spot you could possibly?
And it's attached, correct?
It'll be attached, yeah.
All right, I don't have any other questions. Tony, yes?
Uh, no question.
No questions.
They wanted to, uh, before I got the engineer there, they wanted to see, you know, make sure before they spent money on the plans.
Phyllis?
And the garage is gonna be, it's a two-story structure.
Two-story structure.
Do you have a sense of the height of the?
The height? The garage isn't really, it might be used for one car, it's gonna be one bay. So we didn't go exact, it's probably gonna be nine foot, lots of floor joists, ten. It'd probably be like, with the roof, probably like twenty-five foot, something like that, twenty-six. It was a good ballpark, within a foot or two.
Right, um, you wouldn't happen to know how high the house is now with the?
Well, the house is now, ten, it's probably like five-toe, probably about fifteen foot, not even. You know, 'cause the pitch is very shallow, it's probably four or five-foot pitch.
Okay, thank you very much, I have no further questions.
Tony G, you have any questions?
No, thank you.
And this says it's for an accessory dwelling above the garage?
Yeah. It'd be for her daughter just had a baby.
On Thanksgiving?
Excuse me?
On Thanksgiving.
Yeah, Thanksgiving, that's something.
That's all I have, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't, I don't see anyone.
I mean, once I do the engineer, they'll be all like, you know, once you do the plans, you better look at them and?
You're pretty sure you can fit everything within these constraints?
What's that?
You're pretty sure you can fit everything within these setbacks that?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, it's getting, you got to get a variance on the setbacks. And if it's not exact measurements, what I did, we just would make it a little smaller to, you know, modify it when we do the field work.
All right, um, in that case, I'll move to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. And you can wait a couple minutes, you can find out.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, um, this, this application, it's, it's consistent with other properties in the neighborhood. And it won't have any detriment to the nearby properties or the character of the community. And whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, based upon the, the configuration of the lot and the placement of the primary dwelling, it's impossible to do this without an area variance. And whether the area variance is substantial, um, it's, it's like fifty percent on one and thirty-three percent on, on the rear setback. So perhaps mathematically, but based upon, um, I think, other, um, uh, other residences in the area, I, I don't, I think that impact is minimal. And there's no evidence of any physical or environmental impact. And although this is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application. And I would offer those findings. And Tony G, do I make the motion?
Sure. I move the board approve the request for the area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing, and a result of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And then I would move to close, um, this meeting, and the two thousand twenty-four zoning board of appeals. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you all for coming.
Go for it, Tommy, folks.
Thank you all for coming.